Call the meeting to order for the Florence City Council.
We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the people represented here. Empower us to speak honestly, reflect wisely, and vote with integrity. We seek your guidance tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to swear in some promotions and a police officer. So Chief Mallory, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. As most of you know, we've had a lot of movement in our department over the past couple months with retirements and everything else. So we're able to finish up the promotional process by swearing in two new sergeants and three new corporals for our department. And tonight, we're also swearing in a new recruit as well. So tonight, we'll start with the sergeants. We have Thaddeus Eckler and Joshua Coors who are being promoted to the rank of sergeant. Ted Eckler has been a member of our department for seven years. He serves on several specialties for our department. He is a field training officer, defensive tactics instructor, a member of the SWAT team, and honor guard. Next is Joshua Coors. He's been a member of the department for eight years. Josh serves on specialties as well. He's a field training officer, a SWAT team member, and honor guard. Congratulations to Josh and Ted.
Gentlemen, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky as long as you remain a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police sergeant for the city of Florence, Kentucky, according to law? And do you further solemnly swear, since the adoption of the present constitution, that you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it? Nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons? Nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge? Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending? So help you God. Congratulations. Yes. You need to sign your votes over there.
And then, once we do the corporals, get a picture with them as well. Try and get all five of them up here as well. That's okay. You want to hear me have a picture?
Okay. Chief, yeah. I'm going to go on the end. How about that? Get you a little bit that way. This way? And then, if you want to introduce to your family, you can with me here.
Yeah. Pretty hard to show you brought. I have both sets of my grandparents here, including former chief Kathman, my uncle, my girlfriend, my mother.
My stepdad Jeff, my mom Stephanie, my daughter Hayden, my mother-in-law Mary, my wife's here somewhere with my two-year-old Keely and Nikki.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing them with us.
Next, we have three officers being promoted to the rank of corporal. We have Derry Hutcherson Jr., Patrick Taylor, and Ethan Manley. First, we have DJ. He's been a member of our department for seven years. DJ was assigned to detectives before his promotion, and he serves as a field training officer for our department. Next, we have Patrick Taylor. Pat's been with us for three years. Pat started his career with the Kenton County Police Department before coming to Florence. Pat serves as a field training officer and is also on the crime scene unit. And finally, we have Ethan Manley. Ethan's been with us for 10 years. Ethan has served on the SWAT team and was assigned to the Community Resources Unit. Ethan currently serves as a field training officer and is on the crime scene unit as well. Congratulations to you guys.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you remain a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police corporal for the city of Florence, Kentucky, according to law? And do you further solemnly swear, since the adoption of the present constitution, that you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it? Nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons? Nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge? Or aided or assisted any person thus offending? So help you God. Congratulations, gentlemen.
My wife Lauren, father-in-law Roger, mother-in-law Vicki, my mother Connie.
My fiancee Cindy, my father, retired sergeant Pat Taylor, my mother Mary Ann Taylor.
I have my wife Katie.
Do you want two roses, Melissa? Poller in the back. You're all kind of tall. There we go. And then squeeze in a little. All right. Everybody but five.
Okay. Finally, we'd like to swear in a new recruit, Cole Rankin. If you can come on up, Cole. He's a graduate of Heritage Academy in 2018. He went on to get his bachelor's degree in political science from Thomas More University. He grew up in Edgewood, Kentucky, currently resides in Union with his wife Amber. Cole's a member of the Army National Guard and was working construction and security jobs before being hired with Florence. Cole just started his online portion of the academy and then will report down to Richmond, Kentucky to finish up his 18 weeks of training for basic training. So very proud to introduce Cole.
Cole, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of Kentucky, the United States of America, and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you remain a citizen thereof? And that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police officer for the city of Florence, Kentucky, according to law? And do you further solemnly swear, since the adoption of the present constitution, that you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it? Nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons? Nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons? Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Ready?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carroll, Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Mr. Nguyen.
Here.
Ms. Kemper.
Here.
Ms. Wingo.
Here.
Mr. Osborne. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Item Ordinance O-1520, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes of the special meeting, July 30, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second by Ms. Chambers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. approving a concept development plan and commercial services plan development Parkway Corridor Study C-3 PDPO District for an approximate seven-acre site at 7915 US 42 Florence, Kentucky to allow a density bonus for a previously approved hotel under the PD regulations and provide for an outlot for future development. This is Drury Florence LLC. The effect of this ordinance is to allow a density bonus for a previously approved hotel under the PD regulations and provide for an outlot for future development on an approximate seven-acre site in a commercial services plan development Parkway Corridor Study C-3 PDPO District. The full text of ordinance O-1524, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the office of the city clerk of the city of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Mr. Nguyen?
Second.
Second, Ms. Wingo. Any discussion? We did talk about this at caucus. We had this first reading, and this would be a second reading. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 4-0.
The Florence Aquatic Center is open on weekends, on Saturday and Sunday through Labor Day, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., as well as on Labor Day. Our virtual open house for Parks Minister Plan is now open. Eric, would you like to comment on that?
Sure, I can say a few words. So just to bring everybody up to speed, we did our first round of public engagement several months back. We had maybe close to 1,000 participate through those different avenues that we went about through the survey, as well as the open house that we did at the Nature Park Event Center. From that feedback, what the consultant did was prepare, take those ideas and some of the things that came from that, and prepare what is currently on the website now for everyone to look at. So if you haven't already seen it, you can go to the link. It takes each park. And while these are not recommendations at this point, these are just ideas that came out of it and gives the community a second opportunity to look at that, comment on things they like, they dislike, what's missing, so on and so forth. So as of Friday last week, we've already had 1,800 contributions to the website where people are commenting. So it is getting a lot of traction, and it's been a lot of positive feedback. And there's also an idea board that people can utilize to throw new ideas. But any element that's proposed, you can actually rate and comment on. So I encourage the community that's watching and anyone else that, you know, you speak to about this, make sure that you let them know to get on there. And we're getting a lot of good traction, a lot of great feedback. So we'll know this is going to run to the end of the month.
Seize Arbor Day celebration will be held on Saturday, September 21st, beginning at 10:00 a.m. It will be held at Streamtown Park, 7340 Burlington Pike in Florence. If you need more information, you can call Public Services Department at 859-647-5416. The police department is going to hold their Citizens Police Academy October 9th through December 4th. This is an eight-week class held on Wednesdays from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Application is available at the city of Florence website. Please contact the police department at 859-647-5420 for more information. Chief, you didn't have anything else to add to that? Okay. Very good. Is there anyone, department heads that desired recognition? Anyone on council?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So Jenna and I have matching shirts on today to celebrate Mariah Donegan participating in the Paris Olympics. And so we just wanted to say how excited we are about someone from our community participating in the Olympics. And she actually came to one of your swim meets and was an inspiration to the team that any of the kids on the team could also achieve such greatness. And then also a mention that it's so nice that she had a aquatic center to come back to where she got her start swimming and take this opportunity to thank the four council members that voted to keep our aquatic center open. Councilmember Carroll, councilmember Nguyen, former councilmember, now mayor Abashan, and councilmember Osborne. Thank you.
And just really quick, I wanted to add on to that. We worked really closely with Mariah and her family, and also Channel 5 did some great coverage of the city, and we did the ordinance for her and everything. And so I just wanted to present this to the city. It's a torch. That was our, that's the look of the trophy for each of our swimmers this summer. So it just says "City of Florence" and then "Go USA" on the back, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so very proud to see her go from Florence to Paris. And I don't think she's done. I think she's gotten a lot more confidence with that one, so we can look for her in four years, probably.
I think she came in like 16th or something, which is good for an international competition.
And to be in that water.
Yeah, in the sand, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you. It was open water swimming, so not in a pool. So, yeah.
She did a great job. And thanks to Jenna, she was there, could make it, and she read the proclamation for her at the swim meet, so thank you for doing it.
We had like a nice little parade, really good crowd. It was one of our try meets, so it was a great night to celebrate. Thank you.
Anyone else on council? Anyone in the audience? Come to the podium, please. Probably will have to move that microphone. Can you reach it or do you need? Okay.
Hi.
Yeah.
My name is Debbie Flowers, and I'm running for Kentucky House of Representatives for District 60. But I'm not here because of that today. I'm here because I attended Jamison Beck's funeral. And his family members are very interested in having lighting on Weaver Road. And I did, don't know who to start with with that or how they can start with it. One of them wrote me a letter to enter, to just talk to you all about. She could not come tonight because she's working, and she is very heartbroken because of, you know, the entire situation. Let me see if I can find it real quickly here. Sorry. Here it is. It's very short. She says, "Hello, my name is Tiana McLendon, and I'm sending this letter on behalf of Jamison Beck and anyone else who have lost their lives on Weaver Road. I believe if there were lights on Weaver, Jamison would still be with family. We put our little lights out for Jamison, but also for people to be able to see where the side of the road is. This Saturday, Jamison would have been graduating from preschool to pre-kindergarten. So his childcare center, Bright Minds Early Child Center, along with Heavenly Daycare, tends to honor him. I'm just asking that we save more lives by adding more lights where it's dark at the end of Weaver. Thank you." So if there's anything that I can do, I would love to be able to help with that, or if you can give us some guidance where to go.
So I believe Jamison was a city resident, but where the accident took place was outside city limits.
I see.
So it's outside of her jurisdiction.
Okay.
But I agree that is a dark stretch of road.
Yeah.
I think, Eric, in this case, what we could do is we could make a letter to KYTC. They control that road, correct? There's, I mean, we, we obviously can't erect a light on their road, but we can, we can send a letter. Can you maybe touch on that?
That would be great.
Yeah, I think you hit it right, the nail on the head. So it is a state roadway, and that would be the, the first stop would be to communicate with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, District 6. And they, I would just put that request into them, and I think we could also add a letter of support like the mayor stating.
That would be great. Okay. We will do it as citizens as well. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Lana K.
I can't. I can hardly see. I've had my eyes dilated. I have a detached retina.
Oh.
And so it's very difficult. Yeah, it's very serious. But anyway, I'm going to do my best to read this. "My name's Lana K. Brugan, and I live at 234 Center Street. And I was here on July 23rd. At that time, I asked for a code change to address the bushes bordering the east side of our driveway, completely blocking our view when backing down that driveway. And of course, that request was not addressed. Now, the app that he talked about has been created, and a website exists where code violations are published. The code violation at 232 Center Street, that would be the neighbor, were not about the bushes I had mentioned. They were, they are coded for other violations or infractions that do not affect us and our existing driveway at all. But the app and website state that these complaints were placed by 234 Center Street. We were shocked. And it is outrageous to publish who complained and put that out to the public. It should be confidential and completely anonymous. So please take that post down as soon as possible. Now, one council member visited us to see if they could help, only one, and we so appreciated the concern." Now, to me, that's what being a responsible council member is all about, concern for the community, especially when you come with a legitimate problem. I can't hardly see this. But citizens do not enjoy coming here. I don't enjoy coming here, especially twice for the same problem. And it is really disheartening not to be taken seriously. Now, I'm upset about the post on the app, just because our address should have never been, and it's on the website too, it should have never been mentioned. But two neighbors, I walk all over. I love to walk. I know neighbors from Glen, Roberta, Center Park, Scott, Ash, Lake, Dogwood, Center, all over. So of course, a lot of people talk to me. I love people. But two ladies, two neighbors from Center Street complained, were told it would be completely confidential. But the code officer told the neighbors who they complained about who placed the complaint. And I feel so sorry for one lady. She lives alone. She had a good relationship with those neighbors until they outed her. And of course, she said, "It's ruined my life. They don't speak to me anymore. It's so uncomfortable here." I feel so very, very bad about that. That should never, ever be disclosed. Now, I asked that from the front corner of a home to the street that the bushes be kept at three feet. I don't care that there are bushes there, but we cannot see over them. Now, the bush that is in the right-of-way, that was coded, that's not the problem. By the time we get to there, the rear end of the car is out in Center Street. I just can't understand why this problem, when it's so obvious to everyone. It's so obvious that it's just not addressed. I just can't understand it. But, you know, every nice city is nice and stays nice because of code enforcement done in a confidential manner. That's why upscale communities have their H, you know, their HMOs and all of that, their home, whatever it is.
HOAs.
Right. I think I got that wrong. But anyway, in closing, I have written two letters now, and I've appeared here twice. And I don't enjoy coming, and especially with my eyes dilated, but if there's an accident, you know, at the end of our driveway, which I hope there isn't, but I already told you, I almost hit the mother pushing the baby buggy. My family and friends come, my girls from Florence Women's Club come and have lunch quite often. I just hope that there's not an accident there because it's not on us. We've tried four times now. So in closing, I guess that's really all I have to say. Please take down the offensive post. It should have never, ever been put on that website. And I guess all I have to say is I'm just really disappointed, and I hope I don't have to come back.
Eric, can you provide any information?
So the first thing I'll talk about is the, if the website and the app, I completely agree. I do not feel like anybody that calls in about another resident, their information should be public.
I agree.
On the website, on the app. So I don't disagree, and if that's the case, I apologize.
You can look at the, you can look at your app right now, and there, there it is.
I believe you. We're going to look into that, and if that's the case, we're going to fix that. All I can do at this point is apologize if that's the case.
And if, and if they come in person, and they begin asking them who, who placed this complaint, they are not allowed to say who placed. If something is coded, just go take care of the code. It doesn't really matter who called it in.
I agree.
I mean, you don't have to go and say, you know, it was so-and-so. These people live next door to each other. It's a problem.
I understand. I don't disagree.
Okay.
So that's something I'll handle on my end.
I hope so.
We'll take care of that. As far as the bushes, we did address the resident, and we followed the code there. So.
I know you followed the code there.
I understand.
The problem is, what, I need to understand this. Why is it so difficult to go around Florence? We've said it's not, I grew up there. It was great. It's not the same community. Investors are buying the homes, and they are renting them, and it's not kept the same. The bushes, I can't, we can't have a fence from the front corner to the street. Why can we have bushes that you can't see through? I, see, I can't understand why there can't be a code change. So we can see the east side. I, well, you say yes, but what, what's the answer?
You're talking to the right group. So if they, if this council wants to make that decision.
I wrote to code, I wrote to the board, the code board. I thought they had the jurisdiction, but it's here.
It is.
So that's why I've been here twice and written the two letters.
So what do you want the code to be?
I would like it to be, the bushes on the opposite side are my bushes. That's my hedge, and we keep it at three foot. And the neighbors on that side appreciate it so much because they have, we don't have a pickup, and we don't have pickup truck, and we don't have SUVs. Larry and I both have cars. We have Hondas. They're a car. They're lower. We need it at three foot to see. I don't mind the bushes. Great. Have, have at it. But we can't see over them. I'm five foot nine. Some of these bushes are six foot.
What about trees?
What do you mean about trees?
Do you want to keep trees at three feet as well?
Well, trees and bushes are two different things.
Agreed.
See, I don't, I don't understand why this gets confrontational.
I'm not trying to make it.
Why you're saying that. Okay, well, thank you.
So Lana K., thank you for coming. I do think that code enforcement is very important, and I do think that that is what keeps a city maintaining a high standard. I do know that there are vocal people in this community that are arguing the exact opposite of what you're arguing. They want kind of a free-for-all. They're calling it property rights. They're saying that, you know, people could have all different kinds of uses, and people should be able to park all different kinds of vehicles, and people can have all different kinds of whatever, you know, amenities at their home. And, you know, code enforcement is the balancing act. So that group is loud, and it sounds like this, what you're saying makes a lot of sense. I agree with what you're saying. I agree that we do need good code enforcement. I push back on those people who don't want some regulations because, like you said, you know, you're just trying to be good neighbors. You're just trying to coexist. You're just trying to be on the same street, and you want things safe. You want things to look good. You want us to have a good community. So I agree with you, and I think we can, we can look at, you know, there's, just be clear, there are voices in this community who are advocating for us to loosen our codes. And so, you know, that's something that council needs to decide. I don't get to vote on that, but I agree with Lana K. in this issue. We want to maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods. And I think if this is something that council can decide on, we can put together, Josh, we can put together a memo, we can start looking into this. We can work with our code enforcement folks. We can't write it specifically for one street. We have to write it in such a way that it applies to every property, and it applies equally. So it's going to take a little bit of research to do that, but.
This is not a cosmetic thing, mayor. This is safety.
Safety.
This is safety. It's not cosmetic. I don't care that the bushes are there. It's great, but keep them to where we can see over them, like I do on the others, on the other side.
I agree with you, Lana K., so thank you for coming. And Josh, we can work on that tomorrow. All right, anyone else desire recognition? Seeing now, we do need it, have need for an executive session. Just one second. I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101B, acquisition, sale of real property where publicity would likely affect the value of property acquired for public use or to be sold by the city in pursuant to KRS 61.8101C litigation proposed or pending against our, on behalf of the city, and KRS 61.8101F, appointment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will go to closed session. We will come back into this room to adjourn, but we do not anticipate any further business. Thank you all for coming.